Call to order, the Gurnee Village Board Committee of the whole for April twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Roll call, please.
Ross.
Here.
Garner. O'Brien.
Present.
Balmis.
Present.
Thorstensen.
Here.
Woodside.
Here.
Five present, one absent.
Stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. Welcome, everybody. Our lifeblood for the village of Gurnee tonight, so we thank you for coming and we really are interested in hearing everything that you have to say. And I see on the, well, let's see, I'll read what it says. Lake County Illinois Convention and Visitor Bureau and Big Three Report on Tourism, Business Developments and Upcoming Season Operations. So Maureen, you have first billing, is that right?
You want either that microphone or you can have the wireless?
Is it working?
Yep.
It is. Okay. Okay. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see all of you. It's been a while since we've all been together, but it's great to finally have this opportunity to talk to you about all the marketing initiatives, the strategies we've been using, especially the last couple of years. I don't have to tell you all the challenges we've all faced. So I'm going to kick us off and then we'll hear from John Krajnyak with Six Flags and we have Randy here from Gurnee Mills and we have Jim France and Nadine Miracle is joining us as well. So we're thrilled that Nadine could be with us and she was supposed to be out of town. And I always like to start out with who's on our board of directors. Obviously, the three we just mentioned there from Gurnee. We're delighted that Carissa Kasbaum could be with us this evening, too. As you know, she's from the Gurnee area, so she wanted to be here to support us as well. So, and then Nadine. So we've got Randy and John and Cheryl all on our executive committee and then we have Nadine and Carissa. So you've got great representation from Gurnee area. And as you know, this is a regional C V B. We represent all of Lake County, which actually serves you well. We position, you see, Gurnee as the premier tourism location in, in Lake County. But because we're a regional convention and visitors bureau, we do receive funding from the state through hotel tax receipts. And of course, those have been down the last couple of years. But as I was sharing with the mayor, I mean, we've been fortunate that we are getting some ARPA funds that helped support the tourism industry on a statewide basis for two years because the hotel tax receipts were so low. And that's where our state tourism grant that came from hotel tax receipts. So that, that's helped us continue to market our destinations like Gurnee. So let me start out then talking about the pandemic and, and all the challenges that we faced. And we really wanted to support our hospitality industries and really like that trend word everyone's using pivot. We all had to pivot and really transition to support our, our local industries. And we really shifted our focus to speaking to residents, almost more than visitors, because obviously residents were going to be the first ones sort of back taking advantage of restaurants again and going out and kind of rediscovering their neighborhoods. We were fortunate to also receive some money from the county, some ARPA funds. At then it was COVID and care funds for some marketing campaigns. So we were able to support some advertising campaigns, including some restaurant rallies that we did to again help support the restaurants during that time period. And we continued to leverage all of our social media and our blogs and our website became kind of the first portal of information. So this is a copy of kind of what the website's looking like now that spring has sprung, right? Did this weekend? Yay, Six Flags is open. So that's always great. It's like we're kicking off the summer season here. And one of the things we do then, we've got our spring outdoor guide. And I think this is really interesting that what we put in the outdoor guide, and these are sort of the things that people are actually searching for in the spring. Interesting. And then, and then we build our website and these pages around what people are searching for. And so it's interesting, bird watching and dog friendly places and events, of course, our important farmers markets. People are already looking for golf and things like that. So it's kind of interesting. And then, of course, we've got the family fun guide with some of the top picks, of course, here, here in Gurnee with all the activities, the big three, as we like to say, in Gurnee. We continue to connect with residents and we go back and track everything we do, all the social media posts. And, and so we actually look back and we have five hundred and thirty five digital posts that mentioned Gurnee businesses or events in the past twelve months. So this would be on Facebook and Twitter and Instagram. And we're sort of dabbling in Tik Tok now because, you know, it's kind of the cool thing to do. So we've been doing a little bit of TikTok lately, too. And then we tag the village two hundred and fifty seven times. And I'm going to show you just a kind of a series of some of the posts we did. I thought the one that we had some students from Warren Township from their transition group come into the office. It was really nice. They wanted to hear about the travel industry and what's happening. And of course, you know, promoting holiday in the park and, you know, Halloween at, at Great Wolf Lodge, Mother Rudd House. And just some, just to kind of give you an idea of kind of the breadth and scope of what we're promoting here in Gurnee, because you have so many activities going on year round and just so many things from, you know, launch and from the vipers there and extreme flight simulator, too, and Bass Pro and hotels and just so many activities here in Gurnee, the Frosty Fest. This just gives you an idea. And then blogs, we actually wrote, we write about two to three blogs a week. And there were a hundred and ninety eight mentions of Gurnee events and businesses and blogs last year. So this just gives you an idea of some of them. Here we have the Black Friday, of course, I'm talking about Gurnee Mills, Holiday in the Park, and then Frosty Fest, there was one of our top weekend events. So if I talk a little bit about some of our seasonal campaigns, and we do a special promotion for every, every season. So in the fall, we've got Spooks and Spirits Fall Campaign, of course, anchored by Fright Fest. And, you know, build out these pages. And I really like this branding, this kind of spooks and spirits idea. So it's kind of a play on spirits, obviously, as part of our libation trail as well. But just all the activities in the fall that you can do in Lake County and the Gurnee area. The holiday campaign, this branding was kind of really, I think, really well positioned during the pandemic was holiday your way. So do you feel comfortable getting out? You know, I mean, people, there was a lot of trepidation during this time period two years ago. So we started this holiday your way campaign and ended up using it again this following year and, and really built a nice campaign, all digital, around all the holiday activities. And it was, it was really nice to see that the village of Gurnee participated in this. Thank you. As, as well as Antioch and Libertyville and Vernon Hills. So we had four communities that came together as co-op partners for this particular campaign. Each partner had their own page, sort of their own representation under this sort of Lake County branding. And then everyone was elevated, had their own pages and then their own kind of ad flights within that. So, and drove a lot of interest, a lot of digital click-throughs, a lot of impressions. We had over eighty thousand click-throughs to the landing page. So we had a lot of activities, obviously, promote here in Gurnee as well as shopping, too. So that was a very successful campaign for us. And John McGuire is here. I think many of you know John McGuire there. John McGuire, who handles a lot of our special promotions from libation trail to Lake County Restaurant Week and a lot of partner outreach as well. So John ran a, we ran, in November, we ran a ten day check-in challenge for the libation trail, which is about, there's about thirty partners out, which are craft breweries, wineries and distilleries throughout Lake County. We're actually up to thirty. So it really gives you something to promote as, you know, this whole trail, which gets people really excited about it. And then we did a, a campaign in February, too, for a whole month and had a check-in challenge where people could go to, you know, various craft breweries and check in. And, and we were able to kind of count and track all of that. And John actually just had, this is part of his job. Yesterday, he had to go on a tasting tour. Actually, the winner for it was the check-in challenge winner. He won a kind of a tasting, a day of kind of tasting around Lake County. So John was able to work with O'Toole's here in Gurnee and use their coach and take this group of people around. Then they went to, they started at O'Toole's and then they went to three craft breweries in, in Lake County and ended up back at O'Toole's. So it was kind of a fun, wasn't it kind of fun, John? It was work. I know it was work. It was really hard work. But it was really fun and it gives people an idea like, wow, there's just so much to do here. There's so many craft breweries. So it was really cool. And then we have these T-shirts that we're giving away now. And then we've got this, this kind of wallet-sized guide that has kind of a map of all the breweries. So of course, obviously, Only Child was promoted as well. And that brings us to Lake County Restaurant Week, which we just finished up. It was April first to tenth. This was a really challenging year to run Restaurant Week because restaurants just are, you know, they're so focused on operations and do I have enough staff and can I get the, you know, the supplies I need? And, but we were able to get commitments from about sixty-five restaurants did participate in Lake County Restaurant Week. And again, it's just a chance to really showcase all the dining experiences around the county. And what we wanted to do this year was really, really focus on supporting the workers. So that would be the bartenders and the hostesses and the waitresses and the, you know, people working in the kitchen and really talk about the importance of continuing to support the restaurants just because all these workers really need us to support what they're doing and really make them feel good about the industry that they're in, the hospitality industry. So it turned out to be a really great campaign. Again, we used this sort of check-in mobile app so we could see where people were going, what kind of restaurants they were experiencing. So it's really nice to get people around the county. And maybe they'll try out some different restaurants they haven't been to before. So, so we were really pleased with the turnout this year and we had, we had a good representation from Gurnee. You always want more. We always want all these restaurants to commit to be part of it. But some just felt this year they just couldn't handle one more thing. So, but it, but it was, it was a great promotion. This just gives you an idea of some of the things we did as part of it. We love the Facebook Live. Of course, you all know Mike Kaplan and he went to Primo and, and did a whole live session at Primo. I don't know how many views did he get, John, would you say? Five or six thousand people watched Mike Kaplan on Facebook Live because he, he combines the weather with kind of the whole foodie experience, in this case at Primo. So he has, he just has a lot of followers. And then Leo was at Chocolate Sanctuary, too. Again, these are live sessions, so people can watch them live or they can watch them later as well. But a really nice campaign. The Facebook Lives have just been really successful. And of course, John goes on, you know, as part of your Gurnee, Gurnee's Got It, John is on every month, talking about things throughout Lake County as well on X L C. And then with summer marketing campaign, this gives you an idea of what last year's campaign was about road trips. Again, it was kind of getting people out, maybe you don't want to get on a plane yet, but, you know, jump in your car and come up to Lake County. So we, we ran a whole campaign with kind of let the ride take you and road trips. And this just gives you an idea of how we sort of position Gurnee. We did a co-op with a group of C V Bs in the Chicago area that says, visit Chicagoland down there on the bottom. So you've got Great Wolf Lodge and Six Flags. The only thing missing is you. That was the campaign that we ran with the co-op group. And that was actually done as part of CMAP. So they were encouraging regional tourism initiatives, you know, as, as part of kind of, to kind of help the industry rebound, the tourism industry rebound. So they were encouraging some regional tourism initiatives. And this, our summer campaign two years ago, we were very pleased and honored that it was selected as the best co-op marketing campaign in the state. So we did receive an award at the Illinois Governors Conference on Tourism in December, past December, in recognition for our past summer tourism campaign. So I think, you know, we really do some nice work and some creative messaging and are always promoting, you know, all the things that are here to do in Gurnee. And this gives you an idea of the visitors map guide. We're doing a, a map guide again, rather than a full visitors guide. We wanted to do some kind of a printed piece, but we wanted to keep it kind of scaled back. There's been this, you know, oh, people, you know, can I, can I pick up brochures? Now everybody's starting to think about whether they're going to print brochures and things have changed and gone a lot more digital recently, but we are printing a map guide. This gives you an idea of what it will look like. That'll be coming out later in May. And then I just want to mention the group sales initiatives because this is another critically important part to what we do as an organization, is that we're out actively recruiting for sports tournaments, meetings, family reunions, Navy reunions, that kind of business. So we're actively seeking that sort of business. And of course, during COVID, a lot of that went away. The first markets that came back were sports tournaments, which really help our hotels, particularly on the weekends. And surprisingly enough, the group tour market, too, which is pretty interesting because they tend to be a little bit older. They were just anxious to get back out there. And we've had some success in getting them to come to the Gurnee area. They love the Chocolate Sanctuary. That's one of their favorites. And that picture there was taken at the Chocolate Sanctuary. We had a group of clients that came in and took them to dinner there. But we had sixty-eight referrals for group business, for Gurnee, which actually was very respectable considering, you know, that obviously the predicament we were in a year ago. But meeting planners are starting to source requests for proposals again. We're starting to see a lot more activity in the meetings market, which will provide a nice lift to your hotels here as well. And of course, we're starting to see business travel come back as well. So, so, so let me end with the, kind of the outlook on where we are. You know, I've mentioned a couple of things that work for shortages, which our partners will all talk about, some of the supply shortages and how that's been impacting service levels, service expectations. Thought I'd share with you northern, northern Lake County because that's where obviously Gurnee falls and where you are year to date in terms of hotel occupancy. So fifty-three percent, I mean, it's up from last year. The average daily rate is up, so good news. RevPAR, which is the metric of the two, kind of the primary measurement, has moved up significantly as well. So things are definitely trending in the right direction. Leisure market, I think it's going to be a very strong summer for us and, and you'll hear from our partners about that. I think the good news is ninety-two percent of Americans are wanting to travel, ready to travel, going to be out there in the next six months. And what do people want to do? They want to go on road trips. They want outdoor activities. You know, those kinds of things are what people are looking for. So we are well positioned here in Lake County and you are here in Gurnee to take advantage of that. So that really lets me segue to our partners. And before I do, let me thank you so much for the investment that you continue to make in our organization. We greatly appreciate it. I mean, you're, you're our key partner in what we do. And, you know, we're committed to continuing to partner with all of our major attractions here in Gurnee. And we just really appreciate the support we've gotten from, you know, the village for many, many years. I mean, longstanding partnerships. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Maureen. If I could get, have a couple of questions from the board. Is there any, any questions for Maureen or comments? Any way that we can help you, Maureen, that would make you more successful and then make us more successful?
I, I think, gosh, we've had just such strong support here in Gurnee. I think we're always looking for maybe, you know, more restaurants to get involved with us and be more active. And that's something. And, you know, if, if there's any way we can get more of our restaurants involved, that would be, I think, a really good thing. But, I mean, we've had these wonderful, strong partnerships with the big three through the years. I mean, I can't say enough about, I mean, all of them are so active. And it's been great to have Carissa, too. She's been a really great supporter through the years. And of course, Cheryl Ross has been our chairman for many, many years. So it's been really good. And I know we've, we've talked a little bit about where the funding is in Gurnee and how we'll finish up this year. And, you know, that's, that's helpful, too. Because even though we're getting our state funds, we have to be able to match that through our local sources. So we do rely on our communities to provide the local match for us to continue to receive the full amount of the state grant. I mean, so that, there's, you know, that's critically important that we continue to have support from not only our communities, but from our business partners as well.
Thanks, Maureen, for all your hard work.
Thank you. Okay. You're going to use that one.
Yeah, I think, I think I actually have, I think I have Randy up next, actually. I said, I think I put Randy up next, actually.
This one's not?
Go ahead and click, click the next one.
Randy slides next?
If you push next, I think Randy's next.
Ours were.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. All right. Sorry. Sorry. That's right. I answered his after. My bad. I hope John does want it.
You talk about Six Flags.
I was thinking, I was thinking I slid Randy in there.
Sure. That would have been tricky. I was all ready to go next, but however it worked out, I appreciate it.
Well, John, we'd rather hear Randy talk about Six Flags.
We almost negotiated that trade. Just, we almost negotiated that trade. I was not all ready prepared to talk about Gurnee Mills, but Randy was ready to go. Thank you. Thank you for the time to hear us tell our tales tonight. Predominantly focused on what's new in, in the upcoming year in twenty twenty-two. Quickly take a look back at twenty-one before I do. We had a real strong year. We got open. It's not anything I ever want to go through again. Working to get ourselves open last spring and the stress and the anxiety and, and just that, that lack of commitment to get there seems like a lifetime ago. And I just soon keep it in the rearview mirror. But we got there and we had a strong year. We had, the, the standard of measure is how did you do compared to pre-pandemic? We got there. We, we matched or exceeded attendance revenue of our twenty nineteen season. So we did it different way to get there. We took some pricing, some aggressive positions on pricing. We, we probably matched or exceeded our spending in twenty nineteen, which is, you know, part one of our challenges, too. But it was necessary, I think, to get that recovery of the base of business back. But it, they came out and they came out strong. So happy with that and looking forward to building on that again now in twenty twenty-two. Our primary talking point about what's new, our focus for the twenty twenty-two season is the D C Universe. This is a re-imagination, remodel, expansion of the Yankee Harbor, which is an original section of the park. We identified that in Yankee Harbor, we had the Joker Ride, we had the Batman Ride, which is the world's first inverted roller coaster way back in nineteen ninety-two for the theme park historians. And a lot of product right there in this relatively small footprint of the park. And the third coaster in the small section was Vertical Velocity, really ties nicely to a D C character, the Flash, with its speed launch and, and the maneuvers of that ride. So happened to be that, that Vertical Velocity needed some new paint as well. So it looks magnificent. The teal and yellow converted to the, the bright red and yellow tying to the Flash character, it looks remarkably strong. Rebranding the Yankee Clipper, an original boat ride, flume ride that's been in the park since opening as Aquaman Splashdown. The Whirligig, another park original, rebranded as D C Supervillain Swing. So some nice photo ops in there that you see with these supervillains. The villains can be as popular as the heroes sometimes. I don't know if that indicative of our today's day and age, but really, it, it looks just sharp. This refresh of some of these parks, that some of these rides that are forty-five years old now, just really impressive. What I like most about it is how much it has opened up this section of the park. Sitting in the middle of Yankee Harbor was our antique photo building. And it hadn't operated for about two years. And there it sat. That's removed. All new asphalt and concrete in that section, just opened it up. It looks so much more inviting new opportunities in that section. So we're really excited about the, the expansion. A couple of visuals of what we're talking about. The portals you see on the far left, the one end coming in from our Mardi Gras section and the covered bridge coming in from Yukon Territory as you enter into the D C Universe. Some images of the Flash, the use of the characters is always very popular when we can tie it into the, to the brand. W B has always been a great partner of ours and expanding it to include the D C characters has been outstanding in this day and age of everything comic books. So a couple of the looks as to what you'll see when you get out in D C this year. A big initiative of our C E O and really it matches what we try and do as a park all the time, is improve and elevate the guest experience. So it is, you know, with modest investment to make some of these changes at the park, it's just going to be a much more positive guest experience all around for everyone. If that's a season pass holder, someone was visiting for the first time on a single day ticket, they're going to see some changes at the park. The, the board you see there up in the upper right is ride wait times, some digital boards that we're going to have around the park. It's not the old slide the numbers in and out and hope for the best as to what you're seeing when we're estimating what you're waiting in line for some of the rides. They're in in a couple of our parks already and been really well received. We're adding single rider lines to a lot of our major attractions. So just a little quicker to get through if you're prepared to bypass some of those lines. Roaring Rapids went down in August of twenty nineteen and it was a major investment to, to get that fixed. And made the decision, is that something we want to carry on and continue with? And for a million dollar plus investment, it's something we feel like that ride's going to pay back for us over the next twenty years. This was a fix that's going to be long-term. When we do hit those eighty and sunny days in the heart of the summer, the water ride's very popular. So something that we felt strongly, we wanted to retain that ride rather than let it go. So Roaring Rapids is coming back Memorial Day of this year. We're going to run a couple of rides backwards. We haven't really announced that yet, so sneak preview, if anyone's writing any of this or recording it down. But a couple rides running backwards again this year. And in the D C Universe, a new retail store that's in there as well, primarily focused on all the superhero merchandise and the things real popular with families. Amenities, seating, more shade, more benches, tables. We've purchased seventy new benches. About fifty of them are additive in addition to what was there. The other twenty replacing benches that probably should have been gone a number of years ago. So just upgrades all throughout the park and its seating. All new tables in the food court, which is our main feeder in the park. So the entire food court's getting all new tables. The better of those have gone out to other areas of the park. Just again, get off your feet, get in some shade. We bought, we have twenty new umbrellas, which are the giant, oh, they're twenty-five feet, these massive umbrellas. So those don't have to come down if the wind picks up a little bit. So they, they stay almost as permanent shade structure. So again, these simple amenities that we think are going to go a long way. The landscaping around the park, well, in the pandemic, you wouldn't have recognized the place. It, it did look like kind of the ghost town that you thought it might. But all of the, all of the vegetation around the park, everything had just overgrown so much. There were some of those areas that were a little neglected for a couple of years leading up to that as well. If you walk around the park now, you see a lot of short little nubs. They have gone through and just cut back everything. There's, I'm walking through and seeing things that I haven't seen in years. You can stand in Carousel Plaza and see these other sections of the park that you just, Roaring Rapids, you couldn't see any of that ride course. You see it all now. It's uncovered a couple of little areas that need to get touched up. But we've exposed ourselves in that regard a little bit in these areas. But such a positive move overall. The park looks so much cleaner just with that initiative to go through and cut the stuff back. And, and really a lot of paint around, a lot of concrete that was fixed up. We redid really the front lot and entirely redid the majority of our back lot as well. So both, all the parking areas is significantly better than it has been for years. So simple things like that, not a lot of stuff you can put in commercials, but things that the guests are going to see and experience on the positive side. Food and beverage. Our new C E O came from a kitchen equipment company. So one of his big focuses is on the food and beverage experience. And, and it has carried through. So we're, we're looking at new concepts. We're looking at more ways of efficiency to, to properly move the guests through the lines. On the left side, you see a couple of the opportunities, new areas in the D C Universe. Steelworks Pub, which was Capone's most recently, expanding that, adding a full bar and a full patio. And in this opening of the section and removal of that old photo building, it, it's opened up this area that's right by the lake where the flumes sit. It's a beautiful patio area. You just can see it and utilize it much better. It's a beautiful patio area, you just can see it and utilize it much better and utilize it now with a new patio and, and full service bar that Steelworks Pub has. Captain Cold is a branded restaurant, hasn't been open in a, in a number of years, little snack stand, serving that Dole Whip product that has proved to be remarkably successful down at Disney. People just love that Dole Whip, so know that's going to be a hit at the park. If you haven't had a chance to have dinner yet, I'm sorry, but Oreo Funnel Cake, just magnificent product that being developed in-house. I've sampled it, thumbs up. Some new mac and cheese offerings, coffee at the park, we got a partnership with Starbucks last year, we proudly serve. That means something different than an actual Starbucks, but having coffee in the park has been a hit. People drinking coffee, it can be eight o'clock at night, but they're, they're buying on the way in, they're buying it on the way out, real popular addition to the park. Bourbon Street Cafe is going to be officially branded and themed for that with some new pastries and it's a lot happening on the food and beverage side. Last, bringing up the end, a couple of things that I'm passionate about. Taking over leadership at the park, these are a couple of things that I wanted to get in place right away. Again, not things necessarily you're talking about in commercials, not a lot of investment, but more on the training side and really emphasis. Making this a priority for ourselves from the top down, all the way through our, our frontline team members, is cleanliness and friendliness. You know, we, we had a campaign that we used for a number of years, the cleanest theme park in the world, it was very successful. We have not used that for a number of years and I think it's shown, right? It's something that we live up to as a team, when you can make a statement as bold as that. So working to get back to that on the clean side and the friendly side is as critical as ever. And when you're, when you're fighting for staff and you're fighting for business, to be able to deliver that, that level of service, to try and define to a 16-year-old what friendly means. And how to, to work with guests in that capacity, that acronym that, that our team came up with internally, it's not a corporate initiative. Smile, make eye contact, introduce yourself, listen to the guests and energize the guests and the team, so simple, simple stuff. We said we, we work to try and define what friendly means to a teenager, someone who's at their first job, that's it. If we can pull off one of those five, we're, we're in great shape, but all five really kind of, they do the trick for us. So that went into place immediately in all of our onboarding and, and, and new hire and rehire training. So we're hoping to elevate that, both, both cleanly and friendly at the park for every guest that comes through. And the number one million dollar question is always about staffing. I'll add that I think our staffing is okay right now, I think I can kind of say that from the timing of. We're in weekend operation, we're essentially in single shift operation based on the park hours right now. So we feel pretty good about where we're at from a staffing perspective today. We've got a few weeks till we hit daily operation, until we expand the operating hours to go to two-shift operation. We'll need additional hires to get there, which our foot is constantly on the gas. But again, I feel okay about where we're at right now and the, the more recent trends as we approached and got through park opening as far as the engagement from, from our potential team members and new hires. So okay is the working word for that. I'll close by, you know, showing my appreciation and support for Visit Lake County. In a word, the team is dedicated, really strong, just dedicated to the tourism in Lake County, to all of our efforts, all the partners. They're innovative, they stay out in front of it, they're creating events with a small team of people to, to generate things that didn't exist before. Just to keep us relevant, to keep us top of mind, to keep the traffic coming through, to again assist with the partners in, in the constant recovery that's happening right now. So this year, you know, in all these, I referenced the cuts briefly a little bit, but our media spend is down rather sharply this year. So as much as ever, the support of what Visit Lake County provides us is as critical as I've ever seen it this year. So my appreciation to the support of the village, keeping up with their support of Visit Lake County and ultimately our efforts. So I think we're maybe officially onto Randy now, but unless anybody has any questions about Six Flags tonight.
Trustee Thorsonson?
Not going to monopolize, I just, I liked what Mayor said to Visit Lake County. Do we have anything, is there anything that we can do for you?
You know, I sincerely, I appreciate the partnership. You know, I, I, I came into this role a little bittersweet, but taking on this leadership role at the park now, I've been there for 28 years. Part of my confidence in walking into the new position as park president is my confidence in the team at Six Flags at Great America. And this, frankly, this relationship with the village has been really strong. My, my counterparts across the country don't enjoy that similar relationship with their local government that we have. I'm envious, or they're envious of me, I should say. So that I, I appreciate very sincerely and it's just communication. You know, I've already sat down, had a good meeting with, with Mayor Hood and with Pat and Ellen, had a meeting with GPD, real strong stuff. That, that constant communication is what, what makes it all easy to accomplish then. Anything that needs to happen, it's, it's not a surprise, no one's getting caught off guard by anything. Any issues come up, it's simple communication at that point. So the continued communication and partnership is, is, is all that I'll need to, to be successful, so appreciate it.
Mayor? Mr. Bryan?
I just like, I love these presentations, I love the smile initiative and I love it because when I worked there 41 years ago, we had two things. We had the now look, which was neat, orderly and well groomed, and we were taught that if you have time to lean, you have time to clean. So, so many things that stick with one.
They stick, 41 years. I'm hoping at a meeting 40 years from now, someone's going to remember smile, hopefully, so. A new one, so I appreciate it, thank you, Quinn.
Thank you, John, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Randy, you're up.
All right, so I got to follow roller coasters and funnel cakes. I'm going to do my best here. Good evening, everyone. All right, there's the first slide, some very, very good news. As John was talking earlier about, we're using the benchmark of 2019, how are we comparing ourselves to, to the way things were, sales, traffic, occupancy in 2019? And I'm thrilled to say we're exceeding numbers in all three categories. Customer traffic, retail sales and occupancy are up above 2019 numbers. And we're very encouraged and optimistic the way that things have started so far this year. I, we all knew and went together, went through together, the, the COVID and the shutdowns and everything that went along with that. And I want to again give my thanks to the village and all the staff at the village for their support, partnership, working through it. Would not have been able to do it without you, so thank you for all of that. And we're off to a great start. So a couple of new and exciting retailers that we've got this year. Top Shelf Ice opened in February of, of 2001, but they're just over a year now. And thrilled to say, if you haven't been through there lately, go check it out, it's amazing what the team has done with the upgrades to, to that building, to the property, the facility. What they're bringing in now, they have not only Top Shelf Ice, Ice Arena, but also a bar and restaurant. And then of course, the BTE Beyond the Edge, which is hockey skills and agility training. And they're, they're booked solid, so, and in the middle of tournaments right now. And these tournaments bring in thousands of kids and parents every, every spring and into the summer. Cannot say enough about what they're doing and, and all the media that, that they're generating. Plus all those visitors that are coming from out of the area, they're staying in our hotels and they're eating at our restaurants and they're buying and shopping in the mall. So it's great what they're doing and, and again, if you haven't been through there lately, go check it out, it's beautiful. Just opened in January of 22, Hobby Lobby, this was a big one, a lot of demand and feedback from the community. People are very excited about having a Hobby Lobby right here in the backyard in, in Gurnee. And they are doing tremendous, tremendous numbers so far. And kicked off, hang on one second here, Patrick, I did accidentally skip a slide, knew it would happen. I must double pressed it, so Hobby Lobby off to a great start. And a wonderful new destination for us, okay, I'm just trying to slowly go back one, see what happens. Nope. All right, well, if I can't get the slide, then I'm just going to tell you about it. It's Second and Charles, opened in October of last year. And this is a, a really cool store, if you haven't seen it, go check it out. They have used books, new books, vinyl, musical instruments, collectibles, all kinds of stuff. And this store, it's in the old 35,000 square foot space and they are doing phenomenal sales. It's now quickly ramped up to one of the best stores in their portfolio. And we're excited to see that they're one of our new anchors at Gurnee Mills. So another thing we wanted to talk about is upcoming, this is a really big event for us. We've had the Fire Expo at Gurnee Mills for 23 years now. The, we are bringing in with the help from our fire partners throughout Lake County, the 911 Never Forget Mobile Exhibit. So this is going to be the weekend of May 13, 14 and 15, which is a Friday, Saturday, Sunday. And this mobile exhibit is the Tunnel to Towers Foundation lost, launched its 9/11 Never Forget Mobile Exhibit, which is a tribute to all the lives lost on September 11th, 2001, including the 343 members of the Fire Department of New York who made the ultimate sacrifice. This is a high-tech 83-foot tractor trailer, which transforms into 1,100 square foot exhibit. And it's a tool to further educate people across the country about events that happened on that tragic day. So this is a really neat thing, be sure and stop by the mall. They, we are going to be bringing this into property and style, it will come up the Interstate 94 escorted by Illinois State Troopers, as well as several police and fire jurisdictions, and then on to Grand Avenue. When they get to the Gurnee Mills property, they will be welcomed by community members from, in addition to veterans, active duty, fire and police. And we're going to line their entrance to the mall with flags, so it'd be a really exciting thing. And it'll be located in Parkin Lot E, which is near Value City Furniture and Bass Pro. So with that, I also want to give my thanks and support to Visit Lake County for all the wonderful things they do. It's, it's, as John mentioned, marketing budgets are tight, so anything, any, any time we can work with an organization that helps us and provides and co-ops with the other businesses in our community to bring traffic to the mall is, is a win. So thank you, again, thank you, Village of Gurnee Board and all the staff, and thank you to Visit Lake County.
Thanks, Randy, anybody have a question or comment? Thanks, Randy, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Nadine writes.
Thank you. Sure. So our 2022 update, the colors are all a bit off on this, the transition number. So Mike CD, I'm the general manager at Great Wolf Lodge.
I'm Jim Franz, I'm the director of resources.
So thank you for having us today, we've been able to provide you an update. A little bit of, we wanted to take a little bit of a look back on how the past two years have impacted our business and kind of that transition from 2019 to 2022, because it has had a significant impact on our lodge. And then also what's to come in 2022, what we're seeing and what we're focused on. So to get started, one of the things I like to share, just a little, that's very important to our brand, is how we focus on what success looks like for our lodge. And what's primary for what we do each and every day is that we focus on foundation safety. The key pillar in ensuring our success, it was critical to everything we did to navigate the pandemic. And that's why some of the decisions we made is just as worth it as the decisions that we made. When we focus on safety, taking care of people and ultimately making sure that we're able to drive success to our bottom line. So with that, as we look back, one of the things that we created that really helped us navigate the pandemic, which we continued our reiteration group, was our walk life. This focused on how we were able to keep our operations safe, also welcoming the aspect to our lodge and our pack members back to our lodge. So everything from standardization, partnering with the Lake County Health Department, partnering with our, our key partners at Rockford Gamble for our best cleaning practices. And also making sure that what always follows these guidelines was extremely important to us. And also we felt was really important to our best as we drew open our doors in 2020 and then after the secondary closure in 2021. We gave that confidence for families to be able to come back and visit the lodge and stay with us. So something that we continue to focus on and that we work a lot through, on how we need to operate our lodge to make sure that our lodge is clean and safe for guests at all times. And we still, still see remnants of that, if you come to our lodge, you will still find family in the house. We do still see that, we see that there's a lot more families that are very willing to travel, they're excited to travel and be back. But we do see the appreciation for the protocols and practices that we have.
Nadine, could you use the mic, please?
Oh, sure.
Thank you, sorry.
So with that, so the next thing is, we wanted to talk about, and a little bit why Jim is here, is we wanted to talk about investing into our, what we call our pack members at Great Wolf Lodge. As Maureen had shared and as we had spoken about, employees and finding staffing has been a really critical part of making sure that we're recruiting top talent, but we're also retaining the talent we've had. Through our closures, we lost a, a large majority of our pack and the hospitality and tourism industry was a very hard-hit sector. So I'll have Jim talk a little bit about what we're doing in, what we have already been doing and what we've done in 2022 to continue to build our team.
Okay, so again, our lodge employs between 500, 600 employees to operate. Some of our larger groups are like lifeguards, our food and beverage area, obviously housekeeping is a big part of our group. Great Wolf really has a strong commitment to employees. You often hear companies say, you know, like, employees are our most important thing. Great Wolf really firmly believes in that and we've taken a lot of new initiatives to further that. We've really expanded our training for our employees, because we know that to drive that consumer to our lodge, we have to offer something special for them. So we've really enhanced our training. In fact, Nadine's been busy this week, we're updating our safety training and we actually have a crew from Second City and producing that training at our lodge. And we've been very fortunate, our main offices are in Chicago, so our location is utilized a lot because we're so close to Chicago. We've not only done a number of training videos for the entire company at our lodge, but even some of our marketing tools have been produced at the Gurnee location. And then also being close by, we're often a test kitchen for a lot of our products and that, in our culinary spaces. So it's a great thing for the entire company. But Great Wolf realizes that those employees are really necessary to really build that foundation for the company. So again, in addition to training, we've taken on some real strong inclusion and diversity math programs to enhance our workforce. Great Wolf is expanding, we have a number of locations that are going to be opening over the next year, next couple of years. Very aggressive growth expected in these next couple of years for our lodges around the country. We currently have 19 locations and that's definitely going to be expanding. So we have a management development program where we're developing our internal teams to move into roles of managers, directors, assistant general managers and eventually have those individuals move into general manager roles as we open properties. This year, to start some of that pipeline, we've even done a nationwide internship program where all of our lodges will have a variety of interns working. where all of our lodges will have a variety of interns working in our departments who are majoring in hospitality, other areas of development to help grow that management base. And then there's been a lot of different efforts on marketing. One thing I am very grateful from a human resources perspective, we usually are the stepchild for marketing, so we usually get whatever we can find, but luckily, there's been a lot of emphasis on the marketing. We've had national marketing for employment, which we never had before. And so we have that resource, but then we're expected to work with all of our local partners. And we're very thankful that we have like the Lake County group with us, helping promote our jobs, promote all of our hiring events, things like that. So all the local sources really help us with that promotion. And then another big thing that the company has done is, obviously, competition is really strong out in the market. Great Wolf has invested well over $1 million in wage improvements just for our lodge. That's just our location. So we've seen some dramatic changes in our wages to draw people in. But again, it's the one way that we feel that we have to invest in our people in order to have that quality product. And again, it's great to see that that investment is actually being made, not only in our facility, but in our people also.
Just one thing to add here. So we have, and some people in the community have reached out to us that they're not seeing Great Wolf commercials on TV. They're actually seeing it come up on their children's social feeds that, you know, the employment opportunities and the employee testimonials. And what was great is that all of those were actually filmed at Gurnee. So those, all three are our pack members, and excited to say they're all still three very active pack members. We enjoy having them work with us each and every day, but we've really focused a lot on how we build our team, because employees are your greatest asset in your business. And we definitely have learned that. We always felt that, but we truly understand that navigating the pandemic. So that's been really important to us and something we've carried through, and that is going to be a continued core focus for us as we continue to move through 2022 and beyond. So a partnership with Lake County, because we also draw all of our employees from the entirety of Lake County, is really important, and our recognition as a brand in this area and in this county is also really important for us. And we were also very privileged to be recognized as one of America's best, largest employers in 2021 by Forbes. So that was a really great accomplishment and something we're reevaluating right now in 2022. So I'd love to tell you a little bit more about how we're also elevating the brand in 2022. And I will preface this a little bit, that I reached out to connect with our corporate marketing team, and a lot of things will be coming down the pipeline in about three weeks that all of you will get to see, and I look forward to further updating you at that time. But we're a little bit too early for some of the brand relaunch that we're doing. Our pack is actually going to get an exclusive sneak peek to this next week. So in addition to what I'm going to show you today, there's more coming that our brand is focused on. So first, really important things that we celebrate each year is we want to make sure that there's a demand to go to Great Wolf Lodge, and that there's a reason to come for each season. And so what we focus on is our seasonal celebrations. So we really kick off the year with our Spring Breakout, which we just concluded here, or just concluded here, actually, this past Sunday, our Spring Breakout Celebration. But essentially, bringing families to the lodge for spring at our lodge, and then we're going to be launching our Summer Camp Inn for Memorial Day Weekend. So really, these specialty occasions where you can't find them any other time of year at the Great Wolf Lodge. And then, as many of you may know, we also have our Halloween Celebration. Some really great new activities we're incorporating there, but we do our Trick or Treat Trail, as well as then our snowland activities that take us into our winter period. And really appreciate the promotional partnerships that we focus with on, with Visit Lake County, when they're able to advertise and support us on these initiatives as well. Another thing that we are celebrating this year is, as a brand, we are turning 25. So sneak peek for this June, there will be a lot of focus around our 25th birthday. One thing that's great about this, but it's also really important that we have representation in Lake County, is we've also been challenged with an awareness that Great Wolf Lodge does exist in Illinois, in Lake County, because there is 25 years of history with Great Wolf Lodge and the Wisconsin Dells. So our presence and awareness in Lake County is so critical. So we're very excited to celebrate this birthday for our brand, but we're also really excited that we have the ability to recognize this at our geography within Lake County and as part of Illinois. Another thing that we've, we're really focused on, and we've been able to really build, which is a focus for our brand as we look to stabilize a stronger year-round occupancy, is our group sales initiatives. So we've completely rebranded group sales. Reunite Your Pack is what we're looking at, and we focus on team-building activities for groups in meeting. We actually just had all the meeting planners in Chicago, the MPI team, in for an all-inclusive weekend with us. So it was really great. Their feedback was wonderful. But we really focus on being able to cater to those sports groups when they do come into the community, as well as specialized functions that we can accommodate, where we can do team-building or make your meeting a little bit more fun. And then we also really have a great opportunity with birthday celebrations, as well as bar and bat mitzvahs, that we found our new niche in that market. So we're really excited about that. We've done some really great marketing around that. Just before the close of the pandemic, we made huge milestones in birthday celebrations at our lodge. So re-ramping that up to full speed has been a focus for us as well. But a lot of, a lot of volume kind of coming back to the group sales segment, which is really exciting to see, because that was one of the areas that was slowest, slowest to come back after the pandemic. So with this, I just wanted to give a little bit of a business performance update of what you, kind of, how we've been pre-pandemic and how it's kind of affected us post-pandemic. So just to look at our 2019 to 2022 numbers. So if you see 2019, pre-pandemic, and then we really did take a pretty big dive in our occupancy in both 2020 and then 2021. Some different challenges that you saw through 2020 and 2021 was 2021, we did have the fortunate opportunity to welcome the Navy Group to the lodge, which I know impacted the community as well. But then in 2021, with staffing challenges and with reopening in the pandemic, we made a concerted effort not to fully open the occupancy of the hotel. We wanted to make sure that families could come, have a good time, and feel safe. So we were supported by our larger company, and with our focus on safety, to not fully open the lodge and make sure that we are set up for success to do so. With that, it has been a challenge to ramp back up to that full level. What we have been able to see despite our occupancy shortfalls is that our average rate has been performing really well. And then what we've also seen is onsite spend really grow. We really focused on new programs, new initiatives to enhance the guest experience while on property, and be able to elevate the food and beverage offerings, our retail offerings, and our attractions offerings. So we offer some new all-inclusive packages for our guests as well, so that they're really able to enjoy their full time here. So some good news for 2022. As you saw there, we're looking and we're stabilizing 2021 into 2022. So first quarter performance, we are seeing, we are seeing that we have been able to really meet our budget, which has been good for us and exciting, because we did put a, put an aggressive, I would say, an aggressive goal out there for ourselves. One of the things that has still been a challenge, which we've talked about at the Visit Lake County meetings, is we have still yielded our occupancy down due to our staffing levels. We have not wanted to create a challenge for our guest experience if we are not able to deliver the products and services that they're looking for on time and in a timely manner. The most recent wage investments that we went through in these past about 35, 40 days, we've seen really great turnaround at our job fairs and our hiring events, that we have seen a really great improvement to our recruiting efforts. And so we're excited to be able to, our targeted date is to be able, by May 15, to fully open the occupancy of the hotel. But through the challenges that we saw in January, February, and March, we were still able to exceed our budget and performance, and we were able still to drive that onsite spend. So exciting things that still happen, but wanted to give you a good picture on the state of the business. So with that, I also would like to say, as I think we took it through some of the additional campaign pieces, but it, Visit Lake County, one, Maureen has been a great partner, and Visit Lake County, showcasing all of our seasonal events and bringing awareness to our lodge. But I feel that it is a really important thing that even in speaking with our corporate marketing team and our corporate public relations team, it's really important that we are involved with Visit Lake County, because we do need to make sure that there is a destination awareness for us. Being that we do have that large representation and large history with the Dells, it's really imperative that we have a geographic location, that we have a strong partnership, and that the community of Lake County really stands out, and that this is a destination. Kind of how the Dells has a very strong reputation, we feel that we need to carry that same emphasis into Lake County. And we, we have such a huge opportunity to continue to grow the business here at our lodge in Gurnee. Really exciting for the three-year projections. And when we look at occupancy, I know I showed that we were pretty flat in the first quarter. However, if we would have opened the occupancy, we would have far exceeded budget. So we had the demand. It was more about not being able to open it. So excited for what's to come. For our forecasts and our projections, we are looking to exceed April, May, and June very strongly. So there's a strong emphasis for us to get staffed and be able to open our doors fully to our guests, but making sure we're doing it the right way is very important. Any questions, I guess?
Trustee Thorsonson?
You can always count on me. I think the mayor practically rolls his eyes, but.
I do not. I wouldn't think of it.
I'm really excited about everything that I've heard tonight from all of you, but I was also glad to see the daily rate passes. And based upon your relaunch and everything coming up, I think I better book, we have a multi-family birthday celebration this summer that we've been planning on doing a all-day stay, or a single-day stay at your resort. So I'm a little over 25 years old myself, but collectively, you know, we probably have the, I guess, I would say, a spirit of a younger child. So anyways, I'm really interested in bringing the grandkids and having fun.
Wonderful. We're excited to have you and your family. It'll be a great time. Lots of great offerings.
Thanks, Karen. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Nadine.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
So just what I would say is, is that the Village Board and myself are really appreciative of the strong leadership that our Big Three show. Those are the relationships we depend on daily. If it wasn't for that, we'd just have a lot of difficulty. And I think what John U indicated, it's like the relationship we have, we know, and we don't want to just assume that that's the way it'll be. We want to continue to invest, communicate, and I know from staff and as well as the board, it's so important that we hear about things as soon as possible. If something isn't right, we want to know about it. If something's good, let us know too, so we can congratulate the correct people. So we really enjoy nights like this. Thank you, Maureen, for being the head bandleader here to make everybody come up and say how valuable you are, because you are. And we appreciate the work that you do too. So is there any final comments from the board? No? Thank you very much. And is there a motion to adjourn? Second by Trustee Obama, second by Trustee O'Brien. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're done. So thank you.